The live streaming is not working.
Correct.
You shoot me a text during the thing, okay. All right, very good, we're ready to go.
You are live.
Thank you very much, Danielle. Good evening, folks.
Streaming is not working?
Correct.
You shoot me a text during the thing, okay.
This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting.
We're ready to go.
Of January twenty sixth, twenty twenty-two. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. I will share with you, or I believe I will share with you the agenda for tonight. Now that's interesting, okay. Let's get there first. Let's try that. Okay. Can you all see that? For the folks at home, tonight, we will begin with reviewing the legislative agenda platforms by the Association of Towns and indicating our support for the various measures. We also have a resolution to award a purchase of a plow truck. Our highway superintendent has identified a truck that is in stock. And we are going to entertain the notion of going ahead and making that purchase. We also have to approve a contract, really an extension with modifications with the Red Hook Community Center. We're going to discuss, although probably not yet adopt application fee and escrow for zoning amendment application, we may get to adoption there. Review building department fees, we have quite a few recommended changes from our building department. We'll probably have some discussion there and maybe take up at our next meeting. Adoption, February eighth, by the way, is our next meeting. Review draft STR application and fee, same thing there. We'll be talking about some potential options that we might pursue. And then each year we have to pick a healthcare plan for our employees who have healthcare coverage, and so we'll be doing that. And then as we do each year, we'll be attending to reorganization. It generally takes several meetings at the beginning of the year before we repopulate and reconstitute some of our committees. We have a few border committee reports, if we have time, we'll take those up, otherwise they'll just be a matter of record. And with that being said, let's do some announcements, shall we? Have a few announcements to add. First off, you may have received a mailing from the Red Hook Central School District. There is a referendum on February twenty-second. There's two propositions for capital improvements or repairs and improvements totaling about twenty-six and a half million dollars. In fact, I think tonight they're having earlier this evening, they had an in-person information session. As it turns out, on February eighth, they're having their virtual session. That's also the same night as our town board meeting. And so you'll want to get more information about that on their website, redhookcentraldistrict.org. Near the top, they have a slideshow, but probably more informative to attend that virtual info session on February eighth. Second off, you may have heard, we received our grant for the fast charging EV stations. Here at Town Hall, the town received their grant, unfortunately, the village did not receive theirs. Total's one hundred and fifty-three thousand, and then there's some matching funding from Central Hudson. Speaking of which, Central Hudson started a media announcement related to electric vehicles using a third-party site that indicates that electric vehicles have now become more affordable than their internal combustion engine comparable. So that's something you might be interested in, adoption of electric vehicles, certainly in Europe, Norway, I believe, in December, ninety-five percent of all new cars that were sold in Norway in December were electric vehicles. So something you may be interested in exploring. And speaking of Central Hudson, many of, many folks at home asked about our community choice aggregation program. We're now in our second round of three-year contract. That was the opt-out program where we partnered with other municipalities to purchase bulk clean energy. In this case, New York State Hydro for round one and a combination of hydro and solar for round two. And just to give you some idea, you know, we mentioned that one of the nice features of the program was having a fixed rate and, and for the folks at home, just a reminder, this is only for the supply portion of your, your bill. We had a contract level at, there we go. Can you all see that? This is from the Central Hudson website. So if you opted to stay in the program, you are paying point zero six five six five. And just to give you some idea of how, how much the savings may be for you is in the last month. It was, you know, only sixty percent of what Central Hudson is charging for supply. And the prices that Central Hudson has been charging from June on, I think, have been significantly higher than those who chose to remain in the program. Now, of course, moving forward, that doesn't necessarily mean that the pricing will, will be as attractive when compared to the supply that they were able to arrange for. But just to know that if you happen to be one of those folks who stayed in the program from day one to now, you are actually saving, all other things being equal, saving money over the Central Hudson rates. And in fact, I think Central Hudson shows you the average over the past twelve months, which is a decent amount above what the community choice aggregation program provides. And the other announcement I'd like to make is that the county now will be doing a distribution of COVID test kits. This Friday is a location up here in Northern Duchess, at the fairgrounds from four to seven. And if you are interested, obviously, they're free. And we may have in the next week or two, another distribution at Town Hall partnering with the library, stay tuned. Again, a reminder to sign up for notifications, redhook.org, top banner, notify me. Okay, those are all the announcements I have. Does anybody else have any announcements? Okay, hearing none, why don't we get started with our agenda? At the last meeting, we briefly went over the platform of the Association of Towns and for the folks at home, the Association of Towns was formed to assist municipalities in not only lobbying Albany for measures that would improve their local governing, but also to provide information and education. And so here's their platform. We don't need to go over all of the specifics with each one, maybe town board members, if you want to call one out, we can speak about it again. But there are nine positions that they would like our support on. The first is to preserve and support home rule, that's sort of a no-brainer. Any questions about that, town board members? Chime in if you do, okay. Support highway, bridge and transportation funding. Well, we did hear, since then, we did hear the governor announce additional funding for roadway infrastructure. And we'll have more details on that in the coming month or two. And I'm sure we'll be hearing from our highway superintendent as well. Okay, any questions about that? Of course, we want as much highway, bridge and transportation funding as we can get. And the folks know that we did receive one point six million dollars. About one point one million for the actual construction of the Soft Hill Bridge, so that was good news for us. Any questions about that? Okay, number three, expansion of cellular and broadband service while preserving local authority. Obviously, that juggle that we always find ourselves in, which is the progress, making sure that all of our residents and businesses are served with modern-day technology. All ensuring that we have some say over things like siting and so on and so forth. Broadband service. We are making headway with spectrum, we're closing some of the gaps, we still have some gaps to go, but obviously with increased federal funding. You know, we'd like to see that, that work continued over the next few years. Any, any questions, town board members on that? Restoring state revenue sharing and increased funding, any questions about that? Okay, no. Chris Shaw, I asked you to explain number five, allow municipal deposits at credit unions. Would you do it just one more time, very briefly, for the folks at home?
Are you with?
Looking for my boot, just looking for my mute button. Talking about the limits on investments.
Deposits.
Credit unions.
Right, municipal investments. So, right, so this is just to allow one more type of investment on the part of municipalities. They've traditionally not been allowed to invest in those because of the concerns about security of the investments in the past.
Right.
Prior to the development of an insurance system federally.
Right. But there's been a lot of studies that say keeping it local with your local credit union has benefits. And so that's what the position of AOT is on, on that issue. Created dedicated funding program for municipal water and sewer infrastructure. Any thoughts on that? Bill Hamill, you want to say anything about that?
Well, I'd say is it certainly make it a lot easier for towns like ours to try to get funding. And it would, it would have certainly made it a lot easier for the village and all the hoops that they went through over fifteen years to try to get funding for their sewer. So, and there's no substitute for clean water, so I, I really think it's an important thing for, to push for.
Very good, and we know that there are, because Washington did, did accomplish an infrastructure bill, we would expect more, more funding to come our way, at least over the, the course of the next few years. Okay, number seven, provide all towns with authority to set speed limits on local roads. I think, as I mentioned at our last meeting, this is new and due to our, our hearts here in Red Hook and in the Hudson Valley. And I'm very happy to see many of my colleagues from Duchess and Austria County being vocal about this topic, and it's made it to the AOT agenda. And so obviously, home rule is very important and safety and welfare of our residences is, is primary. And so having that ability to lower speed limits, which we hear from our constituents all the time, may, maybe the, the way, way to go here is to, to just give all local municipalities the authority to do so on these local roads. Reform inequities and the real property tax cap formula. I mean, this doesn't necessarily apply as much to the town of Red Hook. We haven't raised taxes for the folks at home. Hopefully, you have been noticing, we have not raised taxes for the last six years. In fact, they're actually slightly lower than they were six years ago, at least the town taxes, based upon our budgeting and the work we've done and the partnering with our, our grant partners. But there are municipalities that have made significant infrastructure capital investments. And so part of the effort here is to have that not be included in the calculation. And then the last is something, obviously, it's been very important for the last couple of years, which is to amend the open meetings law to permanently allow for remote meetings. Actually, remote meetings have been allowed. Video conferencing has been allowed for many, many years, but there was sort of some absurd provisions in there that you would have to indicate the address, for example, if a town board member was not feeling up to par and wanted to, you know, participate in the meeting from home, you would then have to indicate the home address for that individual, and the public would need to be allowed to access that particular location, even if there was somebody at Town Hall or somebody is at Town Hall. So this would allow for remote meetings and hybrid meetings that would, you know, continue post-pandemic and be sure, hope there's a post-pandemic pretty soon. Okay, town board members, any questions, comments about these? Are there any of these that you don't feel comfortable supporting?
No.
No, all good?
Well, that's good.
All good, all right. It means AOT is doing a good job of collecting our collective thoughts and putting them down on paper. Anybody else? So I will take it by motion, if you will, that the town of Red Hook will support all nine of the resolutions put forth by the Legislative Committee.
I moved.
So moved, who was that? Who won, who won that one?
Me.
Christine, I thought so.
Bill was second.
Bill was second, okay, second by Bill. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Myself, I as well, thank you very much, okay. So I am going to do a little scrolling here, be patient with me. Through that, the next up is a resolution to approve the purchase. We've been provided with a bit of information from our highway superintendent relative to a truck that was discovered on the lawn, and as I'm sure you know, if you can find right now the piece of equipment that you need or know that you're gonna need pretty soon, you want to check it out to make sure it meets, meets your needs and fulfills our purchasing requirements. And so we do have a resolution. Where, before we get to that, were there any questions about the purchase of the truck? I know you've had some time to review the documents, but any, any questions, anybody?
Well, not so much as a question, but that we, I know we don't, we had a previous projected quote for a truck. And so I think it shows, it ends up being about fifty thousand dollars-ish, at least, less to do, to do this, could be even higher. And, and it's here, it's ready, which, you know, if we, that's always been the problem, is you have to order them and then they're made, and that takes a long time to get them. So this is a happy happenstance on many levels.
Right. Very good, okay, yeah, I'm sure there's still some work to put, put everything together on my, on the truck, we'll see, we'll see when it arrives here, but it does look like it, as you said, is a, is a great opportunity to save a few bucks and to get the vehicle sooner rather than later. Any questions? I'm scrolling through all of the, all of the back drop information, any questions, anybody?
You're not showing.
Yeah, well, I didn't, I didn't want to make people dizzy on this one. Okay, so there's the letter of recommendation. We've done a lot of review work on the purchasing of it. There's the truck, if anybody's interested in all the specifics. Plow and wing with spreader. As you know, we have new technology now, where we do allow the sand salt combo.
So are we gonna move ahead with trying to sell the truck that this is replacing?
You know, that's a good, that's a good question. I think that is something that Teresa has discussed. Let's, let's, let's see, let's take, let's take ownership of this vehicle before we consider that. Right, let's have it in hand, I guess that's what I'm saying.
Okay, yeah, I just wondered if it might be good to keep as a backup or for parks or something for the other vehicles.
All right. Okay. I think you see all the information that's been provided. And for the folks at home, so the way this, this works is that you can piggyback, meaning if another municipality, county in this case, goes out and does a procurement and gets the best price for a particular vehicle, let's say in this instance, we can piggyback on that because it meets our requirements. And so I don't know what page I'm on here, but I think you get the, the idea that.
There's a lot of background.
There's a lot of background and a lot of documents that are necessary.
Do we have an idea when we would receive the vehicle? I didn't see that.
You know, no, I'm, I'm not gonna speculate on that, let's see when we actually get it.
Okay.
All right, we hope, we hope a matter of months as opposed to a year and change.
Right.
And sorry, we'll get there, we'll get to the resolution. Actually, I passed the resolution, but it's resolution number three. The purchase of this plow truck for the price of two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Is there a second to my motion to approve?
Second.
We'll get there. All right, any questions? Here it is. Navistar, four by two international dump truck with plow and wing with spreader, not to exceed two hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred. There's a second by Jacob, all in favor, Bill Hamill?
Aye.
Julia Solomon?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Thank you very much, all of you, okay, we're now hopefully not make you dizzy, and now I'm gonna go on to item number three. Pages we had on that last item. Right. Okay, so again, just as a reminder for the folks at home, the town has a relationship, a contractual relationship with the Red Hook Community Center. They provide programs, recreational and other programs in particular for seniors in our community, much like we have programs at our rec park. We pay for those services. What we are doing now that the contract is over, and I believe the contract started back in twenty eighteen, is that right? Chris Shaw, that's in our resolution, I think?
I've got twenty nineteen, I believe.
Nineteen, for, for when we, so we'll be extending, and we made a slight modification, as you know. We applied for a grant for generators, not only for Town Hall, but for the community center, which is now, and has been actually for, for some time, are designated heating and cooling center. And it's been working out quite well, with the exception of the fact that they don't have the ability to keep the lights on and keep the heat on if, if power goes out. So we applied for the grant for the generator, twenty-five thousand dollars. There is going to be some additional costs associated with it. I think at the time they got an estimate, it was somewhere around thirty-three thousand. So there's easily gonna be another eight thousand dollars in costs. And so my recommendation is that, well, once we go out and do procurement, we'll take a look at those additional costs, but that we should provide that, that amount of money, that additional cost, so that they can in fact act as our heating and cooling center that takes a load off of us. I'm trying to figure out the location and provides a safe place for folks to go in the event of of natural disaster. And I think this winter, we have discovered there's still some very cold weather, so any questions about?
Mr. Supervisor, I think that the one item that needed to be completed here is the portion of the remaining cost up to X amount of dollars to be provided by the town based on the estimated cost of the project right there.
Yeah, so I think, you know, my suggestion would be is, obviously, we always like to leave a buffer. I'm also a little bit nervous, the, you know, there's escalating costs. So that, that estimate they had, which is very stale at this point, may not cover it. Be my recommendation to, to maybe put up to, say, fifteen thousand dollars of the remaining cost. And, you know, hopefully, we'll get a vendor to do it for thirty-some odd thousand dollars, does that make sense? That'd be my recommendation, is we'll do fifteen thousand, oh, sorry, up to fifteen thousand dollars of the remaining cost shall be paid by the town. All right, and that is resolution number four of twenty twenty-two, would somebody like to move that? I think that was Julia. Thank you, Julia, with the second by Christine.
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor, Bill Hamill?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Myself, I, and I want to thank the community center for being the safe place for folks to come. They are, they have proper facilities as opposed to Town Hall. For years, I was opening Town Hall for these purposes, and it wasn't sufficient. Okay. Next up is the application for zoning amendment town board. We thought we were going to get an application for a rezoning of a parcel. We have not yet received that application, but for the new town board members, we've established a formal application. We haven't yet established a formal fee, and we haven't yet established an escrow zoning review that's necessary for a parcel to be rezoned. There's quite a bit of associated costs, for example, if it's successful, there's new mapping. new mapping, there's sending to general code of any changes. It's a fair amount of cost for the town to entertain. And I think we need to have a sufficient escrow and fee for that. And what I would recommend we consider anyway is a fee of twenty five hundred dollars for an application and for escrow, I think that should be determined based upon the specifics with each application, because it could be, you know, wording changes for language. It could be something as a, you know, a complete rezoning of a chapter or a parcel, so. Any thoughts on that? I'm just gonna put it out there for tonight, not asking you to approve a fee on, on anything tonight, as a matter of fact. But just for consideration, maybe we can do some comparables in other communities and take a look at that. Christine Kane, maybe you could help me with that, you, you being the expert from the planning board.
Getting the comparable, you mean?
Yeah, getting the comparables and maybe just helping us articulate and understand, you know, fully many of the considerations that might go into an application for a zoning amendment and look at some of the possibilities.
Okay, sure.
Do we have any historicals here in Red Hook? Say in the last ten years on anybody making such a request?
Yeah, we did have an application. Very if my memory is gonna kick in, Chris Shaw, is your memory gonna be better than mine on this? We did have an application a few years ago.
Believe you had from one from Wilms, but I'm not sure that it was ever formally submitted. I can't, I can't recall now.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that from?
Wilms.
Okay, yeah, that was, that's true. That was, I think that was actually maybe before my time or right in the beginning of my time. We did have, we did have. That was a map amendment and that was essentially determined that there was a correction that needed to be made, the one district, the line sort of. Right? And so I think that was, was corrected.
Well, there was another one in the gateway, right?
There was, that's right, so. In fact, I think this application's for that same or near that same parcel, right? There was an application for the corner, catty corner to Hennepin, there in the corner of Route nine. Rockabye, rather. For ABD to go into the agricultural business district.
I only ask just because if there is, and there's some sense of costs that we have that could be helpful to us.
Well, we want to make sure we have a sufficient escrow. This is not quite like you know, just to, just to, it's often not a minor task. We have to refer to legal, we have to refer to planning consultants and then what, what gets generated, especially if it's a successful application is actually quite a bit of out of pocket costs, which we can't pass on to our other taxpayers, so. Alright, well, something for, for us to consider for the next meeting again for the folks at home, our next town, February eighth. So, let's go to a building department fees and take a look. We have some recommendations for our building department and I had a chance to speak to them very briefly about this. You know, we have to update our fees from time to time to keep current with the costs of operating these departments. These departments are not for the folks at home. We don't run a department to try to run it profitably. On the other hand, we don't want costs associated with individual applications to, as I said just earlier, to be passed on to other residents and taxpayers. And so looking at the last time we updated, we've had one or two updates in the last few years, but but the fee schedule by and large has not been updated since twenty fifteen and obviously a lot of cost labor included have gone up significantly. And so we want to make sure that we're covering our costs of operating that department. And here are some of the, and again for tonight, maybe we could walk through and, and talk about this. And see if we can perhaps settle on a new fee schedule at our next meeting, but here are some of the recommendations coming out of the building department. Bob and Steve gave significant thought and took a look at other municipalities. They felt that Rhinebeck was sort of a comparable for us, and so I included that one schedule of fees for you to look at it. It, it has not just building department fees, by the way, but all their fees, I thought you would be interested in, in seeing what they charge for various services. They believe that the minimum billing permit fee should be raised from eighty dollars to a hundred. When you take a look at the work required, just to take a look at an application to approve the application, do the input into the, the systems, generate mail, so on and so forth, coordinate. They, they believe that a hundred dollars is, is now more reasonable to ask. I don't particularly have a problem with that as a minimum. When you look at the time that's necessary from our personnel, that, that would seem reasonable. The, the, the more significant changes perhaps are residential, which is done on a per square foot basis and now we're talking about new construction or renovation. We're at thirty dollars per hundred square feet, so if you multiply that out, if you were to build a twenty five hundred square foot house with our current fee schedule, you were looking at seven hundred and fifty dollars. There's a lot of inspections that go along with it. They're not visiting the property once or twice, you know, with a new construction and significant renovation, they're going there five or six times. So it's, it's reasonable to expect that the costs associated with, with those activities are going to be higher. Fifty dollars seems to be comparable to, to Rhinebeck. I guess my concern would be that it's kind of a significant percentage jump. And perhaps we should have been raising it more incrementally each year and, and we should tackle this each year moving forward. They are also suggesting a hundred dollar certificate of occupancy fee to be added on to that at the end. Any thoughts about that, folks? The input.
Robert, could I just note that I think they are proposing to edit this permit renewal fee? But they're really changing the context of the fee. It was fifty percent of the, what would the base be would normally be, but not less than a hundred dollars. And then, so it was basically in most cases probably going to be a hundred bucks, but now it's changed to not to exceed a hundred dollars. So I guess, is that because? Not halfway down that first page, you see that?
Yeah, you're ahead of us, though. I'm still at residential. I'm at the second fee on the schedule.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to get to that part just yet, just because unless you think it's important as to the, the discussion of the new construction or renovation on a residential. And then, yeah, that's a renewal. If somebody gets a permit, I think that's what you're referring to and the permit expires, they just want to renew or extend it.
Right, but I'm not sure I understand what the fee is going to be then, that's all.
Yeah, it's just for any additional work to renew the, the permit and that's why that is limited, you know, we, we've had fifty percent of the original fee. So for example, if you have a building permit for a new house, it's seven hundred and fifty dollars. But you need to renew it, we were charging three hundred and seventy-five dollars just to renew it, which doesn't seem to me to be commensurate with the work related associated with just a renewal. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I see that, but I guess I think that needs some clarification, because are you renewing a permit that hasn't expired yet? Or are you renewing a permit that expired two years ago and you've got to start over again?
Right, and
It would not be a renewal, yeah.
Well, that's, I think that should be clear, right?
Okay.
I, I also don't think that there are going to be many instances where this would be less than a hundred fifty dollars. Like I'd be surprised if we had three hundred square foot or less you know, buildings. So it could just say a hundred fifty dollars if that's what we're setting it at.
Oh, no, I think, I think you will, you will find Jacob that actually
Conditions and things like that, okay.
Yeah, sheds or, or whatever, something that's smaller in nature and yeah, I mean, one way, maximum, minimum.
Larger one, I guess is my point. So just, just think about that again.
Okay, okay. Well, let's, let's, let's go back up to residential, new construction or renovation. Jumping from thirty to fifty, any, any thoughts on that?
No, I think, I think the point is to, you know, examine the comparables and get, get some information from our building department on, you know, average sizes of, if it's a residential permit, you know, sizes of the house, et cetera, so we have a little bit more to go on.
Well, that's, I, I asked that question and that's why I use that as an example. They said the average house and of course every, every house varies, but is around twenty five hundred square feet that they're seeing for new construction. And so in this case, it would go from being a seven hundred and fifty dollar fee to a twelve hundred and fifty dollar fee. Now granted, you know, in the grand scheme of things, with new construction costs being, you know, out of this world. The twelve hundred and fifty dollars may, may not seem like a significant amount of money, but to me, it just seems like a little bit of a a jump from thirty to fifty.
Well, well, my question is, I mean, if we haven't raised the fees since, say, I think twenty fifteen, what was it in twenty fourteen that went, that it went to thirty? It would be helpful to see what the escalation was. I mean, I agree with you that it would be better if we did this incrementally and looked at it every year, but we're not in that place right now, so it would be helpful to know what it was before.
Okay, so it would give you some more history on that, okay. I'd be happy to get that. Non-residential, again, a significant increase there, in fact, a, a percentage wise, a little more increase. I can see, you know, the, the justification is that there are more inspections necessary oftentimes for commercial properties.
Yeah, I mean, I really would like to have a better feeling for but essentially our, our hourly charge rate for these things, so that we make sure that we're covering our costs when we set the permits. And, you know, for instance, twelve hundred dollars might seem like a lot, but if it's, you know, eight visits, you know, it's not that much, so, you know, per visit. You know, plus reviewing plans or talk, you know, phone calls to engineers or architects, so it, it's, it all adds up.
It does.
It'd be good to know, like, what sort of estimated deficit we're at right now, if the point of raising the fee is that we're not quite covering the cost of that, just have a sense of, you know, where it is, kind of the difference. So I think we want to be a little bit future looking, but also kind of knowing the status quo would be really helpful.
Yep.
Yeah, I will say we can get you that, you know, the all and cost, don't forget, it's not just the labor, the personnel. It's the cost of maintaining the building and the space. And one of the things I'd like you to know is that they're busting out of the seams in that office. I'm sure you're all familiar with the office. You've got two, now three people working in that small office and, you know, trying to schedule around. The plans are just, you know, they're we're, we're going to, to be looking at additional space, I guess is what I'm preparing you for, expansion. And, you know, all the associated costs with operating the department, it's not just personnel, software. There's a, a lot of indirect costs, so we'll, we'll do our best to get you an estimate. But just know that moving forward, our costs may actually be higher than they are.
It would be helpful for the other board members. I, I had a conversation with Bob Fennell. He keeps, he has a spreadsheet in his office of the number of permits for new construction, new homes every year, historically. There were thirty-one new homes built in Red Hook in twenty twenty-one. There hasn't been anything like that since nineteen eighty-six. But there had, and when we had the shortfall, when we had the, the recession in two thousand and eight, things have been flat for several years and then they started to go up in, you know, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. But now it looks like it's, you know, this isn't a sprint, this seems to be going, they're, they're not, they're not doing this in, in, you know, little fits. It seems to be steady and a lot of work for them. So I, you know, my general sense on the on raising the fees seems it's appropriate, given the amount of work that they're doing. And I just thought it would be helpful for the, for the rest of the board to know just how busy they have been, because I've done some construction in my house, which I got permits for, which, you know, I've had a chimney built and, you know, they have to come out, they have to look at, there's all different inspections that they have to come and do at various stages of the construction. And it is time consuming and we've all signed vouchers for, you know, mileage and whatnot. So, yeah, I think it's, it's good for people to have a sense of just how much effort goes into it.
Yeah, and again, I, you know, just, just if I wasn't clear, they, they took a look at these activities, remember, they've been doing it year after year after year. And so when they looked at their time and how many visits and all that stuff, these are their recommendations. I can ask them for, you know, some more detail, but just know that this is what they think is the fee that's going to closest, you know, approximate the, the time and effort in order to provide those services. I guess my question is, do we want to jump up to that right now? Or do we want to take a little bit more of a measured approach? And, and so that's just food for thought on that, but we'll try and get you as much background information as, as we can to help justify those fees. And just note, you know, what's different here is that they want to charge a separate fee for the certificate of occupancy and further down, you'll see for completion as well. And that's something that you want to give some consideration to.
So Robert, this is maybe a moment when I could jump in. I, I don't necessarily have an issue with the certificate of occupancy for these larger new construction projects, but the certificates of completion for some of the smaller scale permits down the line here that we're going to get to in a minute feel like they it's putting a burden on those smaller projects that, you know, kind of the average homeowner might undertake in any given year, a fence or a shed or something like that. And I just, I, I'd like to give those a look when we get to them.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think just administratively, they should have that built into the fee. It's a lot easier just from an accounting standpoint. Not to have two separate fees if possible, certainly for some of those smaller ones.
Uh, just two things before we move on, I would second Jacob's comment about being forward thinking on them, because, you know, here we are seven years since the last time we looked at the fees and you know, we may want to look at them every year, but it just may not happen. So I think we want to keep that in mind.
Okay.
And then I do also would like to get the information that Chris Shaw mentioned about the renewal, renewal concept and what is behind that.
Just make sure it's clear that you're renewing a permit while it's still, it's still live as opposed to something that has expired, you know.
You go, you go ahead, it's a separate question.
Okay, well, I just, and whether, I, I don't know if it's for all, so is it residential and, you know, non-residential?
Yes.
Permits, so, you know, is it just going to be one thing across the board?
Yes, and this is for, again, this is not for an amended plan. So if I come in with a house plan, for example. Yes. And this is for, again, this is not for an amended plan. So if I come in with a house plan, for example, and it gets a permit. And then you come in and say, no, 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 wait, I want to, I want to build the house this way. And here's the new plan. That's not a renewal. That's a separate application. This is just for literally for your permit to, you come in and you say, nothing has changed in my application. Um, but I haven't had a chance to build that house. There's been delays or whatever it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, just in looking through this, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with the recommended fees. Um, you know, I looked at the Rhinebeck schedule and this one and, um. We're actually wrestling with the issue of fees where I work. So we have looked at a lot of these types of discussions already. So.
Okay.
You know, I just, it's a, they seem reasonable to me. I mean, no, they are. Um, expected, you know, within the building industry. So I don't think that they are out of line.
Okay. Good. Um, so let's just.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, um, if the goal would be to implement this sort of immediately, or if there would be some sort of effective date that would be further down the line.
You know, I think, I think you would do immediately, otherwise you're going to get a sort of a. People will start applying for things just because.
Or just in case.
Or just in case, exactly.
And this wouldn't impact people who've already filed though?
That's right, but not, if and I. Okay, they, um, we, we talked about the permit renewal electrical, they feel, uh, most of that is third party. So they feel a hundred dollars is, is enough for that. Um, building without a building permit, uh, double the calculated type fee. Um, CFO searches, you know, when you go to refinance or transfer a property. Oftentimes there are, uh, searches for properties and that requires a lot of office work. And so they want to raise those fees accordingly. Dex porches demo, a hundred dollars. We don't want to make demo too expensive, obviously, because. We don't want to have, uh, structures becoming unsafe because the demolition fee is too high. Uh, driveway permits and performance bond, um, I corresponded with our highway superintendent. And Teresa feels that those fees are, uh, still appropriate. Fence permits, again, to Julia's point about having a separate, uh, certificate of, uh, compliance. Um, fire inspections, I think that, um, they can take quite some time according to Steve. And, uh, so they feel it's appropriate to increase those. They need to be done, um, every two years in most cases. Pool, same thing. There's a couple of visits necessary for pools. Uh, roof repair sign, doesn't really change much. Uh, standby generator. The, uh, other thing that, uh, we didn't have on our schedule, though we know. Is, uh, our unified solar permit. This handwritten part here, uh, we're currently charging fifty dollars. And then after we passed our so- solar energy system zoning back in twenty seventeen, I believe it was. Um, we have those larger, uh, more commercial sized and we have, uh, TBD. You know, there's, um, some engineering review required for those. Um, and, uh, more than one site visit often for those larger systems. So I think that, uh, you know, the way we have it, um, and we passed our. Resolution, I think that was also in twenty seventeen, if I'm not mistaken, Chris Shaw. Where the town board will determine each application, what the appropriate fee is for commercial size systems. So we'll need to come up with that. We've also added, um, micro hydro, right? First in New York State to pass legislation to that effect and, um, wind energy. So, um, we should probably come up with a fee. Not that we'll get a lot of applications, but we already have one, um, interested party in having a windmill. And so we should determine what a fee is for that as well. And, uh, here's the schedule that I refer to town of Rhinebeck that they thought most closely. What's a comparable for us? Any questions about this? Um, we'll try to get you that back up. Any, any additional questions you all have or comments?
Well, I guess I would be curious to hear from the building department, um, if there's a. Sort of a performance related reason why they would like to see those certificates of completion or compliance at the end of a project, you know, does it? Does it help them in terms of enforcement or, um, seeing projects through to completion? Or, or would it be equivalent to just build that into an initial upfront fee?
Okay. I think they were okay with lumping it in one fee, but in my conversations I have, but I'll, I'll try to get you those answers to. Anything else? Okay, so that, that'll be something that we will tackle for our next meeting. Okay, so the same is true and, um. Thanks to Chris Shaw. We have. Application forms, which you've, um, had some time now to take a look at, uh, for short-term rentals and develop. A form, an application form and also a fee. And I thought maybe, um. If you wouldn't mind, if I could start with just giving a few examples I have here. Of fees, it was interesting for me to do a little research on, uh, short-term rentals. In the Hudson Valley, you have everything from, I think the lowest I saw was Woodstock with a hundred and fifteen dollars for. A fee to Sarverdees is two hundred and seventy-five for the initial, a hundred and seventy-five for renewal. Clinton actually broke them out, um, hosted versus non-hosted. So non-hosted was two seventy-five. With a two hundred dollar annual renewal, um, and then a hosted one fifty and a one hundred dollar renewal. Um, Beacon has a fee of a hundred and fifty dollars. Looking s- some of these communities that, uh, around the nation. Um, that are vacation spots or second home communities. And it's very interesting, whether it's in California or Florida. I mean, I've seen, um, application fees that, you know, were in the several hundreds, there even places that were over a thousand dollars for them. Um, I'm not sure we want to go that route. And in some cases, those fees were associated with more of a site plan review. Um, than we have in our, uh, application. But we do know that it's going to require at least one visit. It's going to require some review. And the other thing we need to discuss is whether or not we want to, uh, contract. With a vendor, um, we've spoken about, uh, Granicus host compliance. That is, uh, working for the county as far as sales tax collection or rather hospitality tax collection. Um, for, uh, the short-term rentals. Um, they've done a presentation for me. I've invited them to come to our February eighth meeting and do a presentation for the full board. And the public of their services, cause it looks like they have the capability to do a lot of the legwork. Um, and take a lot of the logistical burden off of, um, our department. Now the question then becomes what is the cost, um, per STR associated with that? And, uh, what are the remaining tasks that we would need to do? Obviously, we need to have the ultimate oversight. And enforcement, uh, ability. But, um, they have some, uh, very impressive capabilities that I think you'd be interested in. I think I've shared with you the, um, slide deck that they provided. So I think what I'd like to do is maybe ask you to consider some of the fees I mentioned. Um, and your thoughts between now and the next meeting, but, um. If you don't mind, I'd like to invite them to make a presentation on what, uh, types of services they offer. Who they're working for, how it works, logistics and how we might consider having a vendor to assist us. Um, since they, uh, they and other companies perhaps, uh, provide these services for. Any municipalities and are experts in the area. Does that, does that make sense? Any questions, any comments about that?
One question, Robert. It would be helpful if they show up, uh, in February. To answer one question I have, I've read this, the, uh, PowerPoint several times and it is impressive. But what the difference between the modular pricing and there any budget pricing is. Um, it, it wasn't clear to me in the two slides, whether the modular pricing was. Regardless of the number of STRs there were.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that was the, here's your, here's your, your fee for the year. Um, based upon the number of units, we, we see that, you know, over the last twelve months. Um, this is our all included, but yeah, I will, we will confirm that with them and we'll, we'll have an opportunity to post questions. Um, cause I know you will have that question and, and several more for them on how, how this will work.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay. Good, good. All right. Um, so look forward to that February eighth on the applications. And by the way, they handle applications as well. So that's why I'm not asking you, uh, tonight to, uh. Um, to approve applications. Did you have any questions or concerns about, um. The, uh, the forms that a crucial has prepared based upon the law that was adopted? You're all good with that?
There was only one, if you pause right there, there's a typo right there.
Right there, yeah. And then Chris, Chris is aware of that, yeah. Yes. Okay. Good. So that's the application, two separate applications, one for the one-time exception. Um, and give some thought about, uh, the one-time exception, what the fee, if there is a fee for that. And how much work is, is involved with that, uh, just from a logistical standpoint.
Well, one, um, the one-time exception would still require, um, inspection probably, right?
I didn't think so. I th- I thought it was a self-certification. That they had working, you know, smoke detectors and CO2. I, I, for the one-time exception, I, I wasn't thinking that there would be an onsite.
We, we would be okay with that then.
Yeah, it's one time up to, uh, twenty-nine days. Uh, okay. Any other questions about it? And these are the forms and, and, uh, as Chris so smartly. Um, put together, you know, have the law go with it. We might even want to have a little cheat sheet. Um, for folks, just to make it easy for them to get through the process, but let's, let's look at what Granicus offers. Um, and see if they or another vendor can maybe take a lot of that work for us. Can all be done online. For example, they do, they do, uh, monitoring. They do everything from issuing, uh, letters of violation, obviously there. Um, we're the only ones that can issue a violation, but they can do the communications necessary. On that. Okay, um, next up on the agenda is every year we have to approve a healthcare plan. We've had the MVP silver eight now for several years. I think prior to that, we had the MVP three. We've had the CDHP, um, plans previously as well. Um, we budgeted it for about six percent increase, um, on the premiums. Um, it looks to come in just a little bit lower than that at five percent if we were to continue with the same plan. The benefits of this plan are pretty obvious is that the costs. Um, you know, we're not transferred any additional costs, we're not transferred over to the employee. And, uh, everything's covered after deductible. And for the folks at home, we provide healthcare insurance for our full-timers. Um, those who were hired prior to twenty twelve, I think it is, get a hundred percent in the premium. And all of the copay and deductibles, uh, covered. Um, there are, it does look like there are some additional possibilities that we could, um, explore. Perhaps, um, at a, at a later time, I would think might be more appropriate. Um, given the fact that we are under budget, the increase seemed somewhat modest this year. I think I'd be inclined to go with the existing, um, plan. Anyone have any thoughts on that, whether or not, um, they've seen something that in this slide back here that they like better?
Uh, no, it's always. You know, I think it's bad if the, if you want to stay with the insurance, because it does cause ripple effects. If you change the plan, then everybody has to change all their information and get, um, re-signed up and et cetera.
Yeah, there's, there's new paperwork, yeah.
Yep, my, so my, uh, my question was actually, again, what was the timeline on this?
It's, you know, we, we really should try to, uh, make a decision tonight if we could. Because the plan year starts March first.
Yeah, okay.
Especially if you're thinking about switching to a different plan. I mean, it's really, uh, um. You know, you want to go with at least thirty days if you can. Um, if you can, you can, but if you can, uh, before you make those changes. The coverage, the services, the service area, all of that, um. You know, uh, they're all different, all these plans. I mean, this is only a sampling of what's offered, uh, for the folks at home. We, you know, generally look at a good twenty-four to thirty different plans for comparison. Anybody, uh, uh, see any one of these that they like better than what we're on right now? All right. Going once, going twice. I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and we continue with the MVP. EPO HDHP Silver Eight Exchange Certified Plan. Is there a second?
Second.
Um, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Bill Hamel.
Hi.
Jacob Testa. Christine Kane, Julia Solomon.
Hi.
I, I.
Hi.
Thank you so much. Next up, yeah, there's some, some more of the information. Okay, we are at three four. So let's see if we can jump here. Alright, so let's scroll down to if we could stop there. Agriculture and Open Space Advisory. Have we had any word from, uh, Mary Ann Johnson on that?
Uh, yeah.
Not yet, Christine. Okay. Um, assessment or review board, I reached out to, um, I was thinking. Uh, Steve Appenzow would be great for that. I know he's, um, somewhat extended with all his volunteering. And the Education Foundation and a member of the CAC. And we had a fairly lengthy discussion about, you know, what's involved. And he seems very interested. I think he's going to send the letter of interest and we're sort of desperate for a member there.
Yeah, I think you're right. He'd be great.
Yeah.
Deanna, can you make it a little bigger?
Yeah, I don't know how to do, why this is happening.
I think it should be down at the bottom where there's the slider, a hundred percent.
Oh, here, I have to move you guys. Sorry, I'm not really good at this.
You see a little bottom right there. There's a slider thing right there.
Oh, okay, great.
There you go.
Good.
That looks good. Okay, so now we got to scroll to the appropriate page. Wonderful. Thank you. So Assessment Review Board. So we have literally three vacancies now with. Resignations, some folks who have some personal issues they have to attend to. So Carl Downs submitted his resignation. As you know, Carl gave, boy, I think upwards of thirty years to the Assessment Review Board. Really amazing. So we have. Let's, let's, let's wait, let's see if Steve sends in his letter of interest. Anyone else wanna wanna share their support for Steve for that Assessment Review Board if in fact he. He does commit?
I worked with Steve on the CAC and he's obviously very qualified.
Yeah, very good and and knowledgeable about the real estate market and obviously gone through. He's moved, moved from the town to the village. And so it would be good also to get a village member. Resident, somebody who experienced in the village market. And some very interesting stats that were sent to me just today, as a matter of fact, on the real estate market, just the. Change in transactions between fourth quarter of twenty one versus fourth quarter of twenty. And it's remarkable how fewer real estate transactions have taken place in this just concluded quarter. Versus five quarters ago, less than half as a matter of fact. But the median price is quite high, looking to be countywide somewhere around three hundred and eighty thousand. And in fact, in Red Hook, the median is looking, according to this one report. That Berkshire Hathaway issued over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in rent, so. We'll get to affordable housing. Mention a little later in the meeting, okay? Deanna, can we scroll down and then we'll look to to get a chair Pete Hubble, by the way. Who's been on there for several years. Pete used to have a. Real estate appraisal firm, you know, I would, I would recommend we might consider him. To chair the Assessment Review Board with his background, several decades of doing that. So let's see if we can finalize that for February eighth. Okay, next up. So no changes yet there, but hopefully forthcoming. So again, we're back to Mary Ann Johnson on CPF PDR. No word yet on that. We don't have any vacancies. We've issued a news alert on where we. Have calculated there are vacancies in our boards and committees and sent that out. So hopefully we'll get more letters of interest. Communications Committee. Okay, Jacob, did Sarah give us? Any indication of who wants to remain on that committee? I know we did get a letter of interest, I think, from our Highway Super to. To go back on that committee. Is that correct?
Yeah, we got a letter from Teresa. I haven't been able to connect with Sarah yet. I'll reach out to her after this meeting and. Have a plan in place for the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, and let's see if we can hear from all those members.
I did hear from Sarah informally that she's sort of canvassing for potential members, so she's clearly interested in serving as the chair.
Okay, and I see some of these people were representing other other committees on the Communications Committee, but I don't. Actually think that either one of them like Lisa is no longer on the planning board, so we might wanna. You know, see if there's a new, a new candidate for that spot and the same, I believe, is true for Vicky. We need to get. More from Vicky on whether she wants to remain on Senior Services, okay?
Are are there requirements for those committees to be represented here, or is that just a note that they were represented previously?
There's, there's not a requirement, although when it was formed, I think that they wanted to have representatives. From those committees because they thought it was very important to communicate out, you know, when it comes to planning, you know, oftentimes. The general public's very interested in that. Senior Services Communications is really key. One of the things we talk about a lot is the demographics in the community and the forms of communication are very different for the twenty something sometimes than they are for the seventy something. And so. It's not necessary. It's not a form formal thing, but but good to get broad representation there.
Yeah, I think it's a good consideration. I just wanted to check and see if it was a requirement or not, because if it was, that would, you know, change the pool of people.
Yeah, Complete Streets, that needs to be reconstituted. I can get that done by February eighth.
And Robert, I had put my name down as sort of a backup for you on that. So if you wanted to connect about that committee, I'd be happy to.
Let's, yeah, we need to get that finished. Our grant extension runs out, I think, later this year. Okay, CAC, it looks like we have a vacancy. Is that correct?
Well, we have two and we, oh, we have one letter of interest here.
Okay. Do you wanna, do you wanna tell us about that? And did the interested party speak with Lori and did Lori make a recommendation to appoint that person?
Yeah, so. It's Francis who's been attending meetings for the last handful of months and been working with the with the committee, taking notes and, you know. Really participating, so that's been really helpful. I I found that I I don't think there's any opposition. I don't know that I've spoken to Lori about it specifically, but my sense is that. There's broader support from within the committee.
Okay. I'd like to just follow the protocol and have them meet with the chair of the committees and discuss the requirements.
Well, I know that she's been working with Lori.
She has, okay.
Yeah, yeah, she's been taking minutes and like.
Okay.
Like, like, working, like, like, participating pretty actively in the committee for the past.
Okay, so this task approval, okay.
Yeah.
That's fine. So did you want to make a motion to a. A point and for a period ending when which slot? We have two year appointments. I think it's interesting that it says vacant twenty twenty four, although there wouldn't be any twenty twenty fours yet. They would be twenty twenty threes. So why don't we? Jacob, you want to make a a motion to appoint? This individual for one of the vacancies ending the period twenty twenty three?
Yes, I'm trying to find. Last name.
I believe it's Duncan, Francis Duncan.
Francis Duncan, okay. Yeah, so I'll make a motion to. Appoint Francis Duncan to a vacancy on the Conservation Advisor Council for a term ending in twenty twenty three.
Okay.
My second.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Julie. Any further discussion? All in favor? Bill Hamel?
Hi.
Christine Kane?
Hi.
And myself. And Jacob, we don't have anybody dropping off there that I know of.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Okay, so why don't we, let's tackle the reappointments. So that would be, whoops. We went a little too far there. Thanks, Deanna. The reappointments, those that are up in twenty twenty one. The holdovers, that would be Jen Kavanaugh, Lori Urban, Dennis Colley. Lori Eustad and Mike Zeeley. And so I'd like to. Ask you, Jacob, would you like to make a motion to reappoint them to terms ending in twenty twenty three?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to do that. And also, can I, should I include to reappoint Lori as a chair as well?
We generally separate that one out, but.
Okay.
We don't have.
Then, then, yeah, leave it out then. I'll make a motion to reappoint the individuals you named.
Second that.
All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Christine Kane? Did we lose Christine? Did her internet go out?
Sorry, I thought I had unmuted. I.
Okay. And myself, I and Jacob, just the the reason we separated out is because it's hard to make somebody a chair if they're not a member yet. So it makes it a little challenging to do it all. All right, Deanna, if you could scroll down to the next page, that'd be great. Design Review Hamlet Committee. Bill Hamel, have we heard any word from?
Yes.
Okay.
I spoke to Chris and Chris would like to continue as the chair. He doesn't need to be reappointed because his appointment expires next year, this year. Will Tatum and Jeff Carter would like to remain. Tiffany apparently quit two years ago, according to Chris, according to Chris.
Resigned, we like to call it resigned.
Resigned. He, I was just my notes to what he said.
Right.
And that Emily Major was replaced as an advisor by Wint Aldridge.
Okay. All right, so we have a vacancy. We'll add that to our list on the Design Review Hamlet Committee. I thought we had. Okay, Will was the last one we appointed. Okay, that's fine. So. Bill, would you offer a motion to reappoint? Then we're looking at Jeff and Will. For term ending in twenty twenty three?
I make that motion.
Okay. Who would like to second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christine. No further discussion on favor, myself, I, Julia Solomon.
Hi.
Jacob Testa.
Hi.
And then a separate motion to reappoint Chris Gilbert as the chair. And again, the chairs are one year appointments. So this would be for a term ending in twenty twenty two. Do you make that motion, Bill Hamel?
I moved to make Chris the the chair.
Okay. I'll. I'll second that. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Christine Kane?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
And for Deanna, for Deanna, Aldridge is the last name. The first name is Wint, W I N T.
And Robert, maybe I just missed it, but did we actually end up reappointing Lori as the chair after we reappointed her to the committee?
I hope we did. If not, we can do it now. Let's do it again.
I think we skipped it. So I'll move to reappoint Lori Houston as the chair of the CAC.
Second. Julia can have it.
Our life to think long and hard if we want to reappoint Lori as the chair of the CAC. She makes us look bad, all of us. All in favor? Bill Hamel?
Hi.
Who's left? Myself, I. Who didn't vote on that?
I.
I thank you, Christine. So that's for a term ending in twenty twenty two. And Lori, thank you very much for all the great work you did. Next up. Is we did Design Review Disaster Preparedness Committee. I'm going to have to come back to you. And see if we, any chance we can get Hypeng to to remain on that committee? I know she's quite busy, so I'll be back to you on DPC. EDC, Jacob. Have we heard from Christina on who's interested in remaining? Bill Hamel, I know you had some thoughts about. Membership. Jacob, what would you like to report first?
Yeah, so I haven't had a like discussion about it, but all the people who are listed here attend the meetings every week, so I have no sense that anybody's interested in stepping away. Everybody's been participating. Basically weekly. So I don't know, Bill, if you had anything that you wanted to. Say.
Um, no.
Okay. Send your piece. All right. I see we have Ken Mangrela. I can open space representative. I'm not quite sure whether that's listed out there. Again, I don't know that there was anything that said. We needed to get an open space representative on the EDC. He's now a two year holdover on the committee, right? Appointed on April twelve. All right, so Jacob, can you come back to us on February eighth and we can do appointments then for EDC? And if there's any other individuals. Interested.
Yeah, yeah, I'll confirm with them that everybody wants to continue.
True. Okay, thank you very much. Next up. Deanna, thank you so much for multitasking again. Energy Committee, so I think we've tackled Energy Committee. We have two additional vacancies. We we tackled that last time. All right. And I know Dennis is. Has one or two people he's talking to about potentially joining committees, so that's that's great. Ethics Board. Next up on that. And.
So we have, we have two things to do here, I think. I think we have to. Reappoint Sal Guido, who I understand is interested in continuing. And then there's also a vacancy that we received a letter of interest for. For somebody who has spoken with the chair and had a recommendation from the chair. So I actually heard from Brenda earlier today about. The question about whether we appointed. Her at the last meeting. So I don't know if you want me to separate that out. I know that everybody has the materials for Amy for the vacancy. Do you want me to do two separate? Motions for appointments, or I don't know if anybody has discussion or things they want to talk about for this?
No, I feel comfortable now voting on the ethics appointment. There was a referral made. Having to do with my voting on a zoning matter. And so the minutes reflect that there was. No, no violation whatsoever. Voting, obviously, town board members and town supervisors have to vote on zoning changes. So I'm comfortable voting now. Deanna, the only thing I would say is the vacancy shows that the term would end twenty twenty seven. It's actually twenty twenty six. It's a five year appointment. And we have had Amy's resume now for quite some time. So Jacob, did you want to make that?
Yeah, I I would like to make a motion to appoint Amy Linker to the Ethics Board for a term ending in twenty twenty six. And then I guess the question I had is whether I should include Sal in the same motion, or if you want me to separate that out. I can do either way.
Yeah, well, that is, that is a good question. It's not staggered for some reason.
Can I just jump in? Yeah, it needs to be staggered. It has to be stacked. So I think that vacant position is.
Is a mistake.
Twenty four is what's in there, which is actually probably correct.
Yeah.
Because. If Sal is twenty twenty one, Gail twenty two, twenty three, then there should be a twenty four.
Yeah, I think it's the vacancy. So.
I think the vacancy was twenty four, right?
Yeah. And that would have been Fred's position, probably. All right, yeah.
I don't know. I'd have to go back and look at the history, but.
So that makes sense. And then.
Well, well, for Sal, then we'd be looking at.
Twenty twenty six.
Six, right.
So and then it's got the proper. Stagger. So you want to make both of those?
Yeah, I'll combine those. Yeah, so so like I said before, moving to, amending it, I guess, moving to appoint Amy Linker to a. To the Ethics Board for a term ending in twenty twenty four and then also Sal Guido to be reappointed for a term ending in twenty twenty six.
Terrific. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And everybody join in. That's okay. All in favor? Bill Hamel?
Hi.
Julia Solomon?
Hi.
And myself, I. And at the last meeting, we did reappoint Brenda as the chairperson. So that is good news. We've got that tackled. Greenway and Trails, anything Christine Kane from Lisa Well?
I, yeah, Lisa had, Lisa had sent in, I believe, an email that she was interested in. Taking on the chair from Howie.
Well, that we, we took care of that at the.
Got that one done.
Right.
And. That's all I heard from. I don't have any, I don't have any reason to believe that anyone wants to. Depart the committee, but I'll reach out to Lisa to confirm.
Okay, so let's, let's see if we can wrap that one up. Also, we don't, well, we do have one vacancy on the Greenway. Okay, good. Intermunicipal Task Force. Let's see.
So are we going to keep this going or not? Because I thought they had sent in a thing. So are we gonna keep this going or not, because I thought they had sent in a thing that they could, you know, suggested disbanding.
Right, so there's some thought about, you know, maybe reconstituting, um. Wha- what are your thoughts, folks? I think there's, there's value in it.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of value in it, and I think that, you know, Julie and I were planning on talking next week, kind of, for this and a, and a couple of other things, but, um, maybe let's skip this for now and then kind of revisit, I, I do think that we'll wanna look at kind of what the charge might be and consider whether, like, whether we wanna reconstitute, how we wanna reconstitute it, and sort of the purpose of that one.
Okay. Sounds good. Um, next up, and that one does have, you know, in its current form, it does have required members. So that it has the broad representation from the various municipalities and their boards. As well as representatives from the community at large. Okay, a local waterfront revitalize, I can't even speak, revitalization plan committee. This is what happens when you talk too much during a meeting. Christine Kane, so we have two issues here, first of all, this is a what's different about this committee and why everybody's appointed for the same term is because they are task-focused, which is that they are updating our plan, and so everybody will conclude at the same time. Unless, of course, there's value in having them, um, go past, uh, the time at which the plan is uh, updated and adopted. Um, we did have a letter of interest, uh, Christine, did you wanna speak to that?
Um, yes, um.
That was from Paul Chevalier.
Yes, current, thank you, I was looking for his last name, um, and so he, uh, has asked to join the committee and uh, the chair, Paul Skunmaker, and he have spoken, and we also got a confirmation from Paula that she thinks it would be a great addition to the task force, so I think we should go ahead and appoint um, Paul Chevalier to our vacant position.
Okay. Sounds good, um, and obviously, all of the, um, well, let's appoint him. Christine, you wanna make a motion?
Uh, make a motion to appoint Paul Chevalier to the L W R P committee.
I second that.
Good, and he has a interesting background, which I think will be. Right, has a lot of experience.
Yeah, especially as we move into the harbor management plan section of it, I think it's gonna be great.
Right. Okay, wonderful, so with Paul and, uh, term ending in twenty twenty-three, and there's a second by Bill Hamel, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Myself, hi.
Okay, so do we need to re-up everybody else for twenty twenty-three?
Would you please make that motion, Christine?
Uh, I would ma- I would move that we reappoint the members of the L W R P committee to, to new, two-year terms ending in twenty twenty-three.
And I would second that motion. Any, any discussion? If not, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Hi.
And then the final motion to, um. Reappoint Paula, who's done such a wonderful job. I don't think Paula knew how long this was gonna take, what she signed up for, I'm not sure.
Did not.
Signed up for, but she's been a godsend. So, Christine, would you like to make that motion?
Uh, make a motion that we reappoint Paula Skunmaker as the chairperson of the committee.
Right, and that's a one-year term, all chair, chairs are ending in twenty twenty-two. And I would second that motion. All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Hi.
Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Okay, planning board. So. We had, um, a letter of interest from Arthur Solomon, I hope I'm pronouncing the last name. It's Salmon with an F, with an A. And, um, he was interviewed by Sam Phelan, who made the recommendation to appoint him, and I also, um, had a virtual meeting with him as well. He is a, uh, retired attorney, did a lot of work, um, for M and T Bank uh, for a few decades, and, um, has a, a, a very good background, a fairly new resident to the community. And, uh, Sam Phelan would like to recommend him to the board, he's been attending, uh, board meetings. And obviously, he needs to get some training, and we'll talk about training, I think, when we're finished with the, the committee list. And at this point, um. I think it might be wise to appoint him perhaps, uh, for the term ending this year, let's see how he likes it. Um, we do have a vacancy for twenty twenty-two. And so.
I, I think we should just appoint him to the twenty twenty-five slot, why would we do the twenty twenty-two slot?
Well, just to see if he likes it, it's a long term. But sure, if you wanna do the twenty twenty-five, let's do the twenty twenty-five, Christine.
We're gonna have to fill the vacancy at some point either way, right?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it doesn't matter really much, but. And I know that there's somebody else that Sam's gonna be talking to also. So. We might be, we might have somebody for our next meeting there.
Well, then, if, if that's the case, if it's who I think you think it is, then I, then I think I would recommend that we report, uh, we we, um. Go ahead and we appoint Arthur Solomon to the term ending in twenty twenty-two, see how he likes it. Um, and then, um, if Amy is in fact, um, going to provide a letter of interest, uh, the twenty twenty-five term, I think would be better suited, she's got a lot more experience, um, here in our community and background, does that make sense? Christine, are you?
That's fine.
So, um, I'd like to make a motion, we appoint Arthur Solomon to a vacancy on the planning board for the term ending in twenty twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine, any further discussion, if not, all in favor, Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Hi.
Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd also like to make a motion to, um, reappoint Sam Phelan as the chair.
I'll second that one. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Okay, very good, we're getting, we're getting through this, um. Recreation Commission. Alright, I don't think we have, um. Well, we do have some changes, I think, um. Let's get, let's come back to this one, I don't think, um. One or two of these members are, are still participating, so let's, let's come back. Uh, before we do reappointments, we're a church cemetery committee, anything on that, Christine, or not?
Not yet, no.
Okay, so come back to that one, St. Margaret's, we would have to reconstitute that committee. Get admission statement, uh, we did have one letter of interest, um, so far, we haven't, um, been soliciting. Yeah, for volunteers of this committee, but, uh, we did get one letter of interest from Linda Keeling, so let's see if we can, uh, figure out admission statement and, and get some folks started on this work, because we have grants coming in. Right, um, senior services has been dormant for a little while, we need to get them up and running again. I hope to be able to report some, could you scroll down a little further, Dana? Report some at the next meeting of February. Sister Cities were taken out, you can just remove that pane if you would, that comes back at some time. Tree preservation, uh, Jacob.
Yeah, my understanding is that everybody would like to continue here, so, um.
Go ahead.
Yes, I was gonna make a motion to reappoint Cody Hay, David Grover, Eleanor Freary, um, for terms ending in twenty twenty-three.
Very good, and I would second that motion. Um, any discussion, if not, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Hi.
And Christine Kane?
Hi.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And I'd like to make a second motion to reappoint Kathy Michael as a chair for a term ending in twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that as well. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa? Looked at Bill Hamel?
Hi.
Just, I, I could hit the recording at this point, just spit out the name, the only downside
Hi.
Virtual meetings, as you can't just all say, "I". It's not good enough, okay, very good, um. We tackled that all, and of course, Dan is doing wonderful multitasking, thank you, Dan. Water District Number One Water Board, um.
I have.
Right, Bill, you wanna?
Yeah, it's, uh, I spoke to, well, emailed, uh, with Hank and with, uh, Doreen. And, um, all of the people who are up for reappointment would like to stay on the board.
Terrific, so you wanna make a motion to that effect?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for, to reappoint, uh, Jerry Gilneck, um. Uh, Larry Carr. Greg Phildees and Michael Roenberg for a two-year appointment, ending in twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that. Um, any further discussion, um, if not, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Christine Kane?
Hi.
Thank you very much, um, second motion?
Hank, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Hank and Jerry as the chair and the vice chair.
Terrific, and that would be for term ending in twenty twenty-two, I'll second that as well. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Christine Kane?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
I'll get the hang of this, don't you worry about it, okay. Zoning Board of Appeals, so we have, uh, now, one, two vacancies, don't we? We have one. There we have.
There we go.
Yeah, we have a one vacancy and, um, two alternate vacancies, so, um. We may have someone interested in that spot, but if you are watching at home and interested in the zoning board of appeals. Um, do let us know.
Now, I, I did, I, we're still waiting to hear back from, uh, Jim Hegstetter. We have no reason to believe that he's not interested, but we just haven't. But, uh, Chris Carney, uh, would like to be reappointed, there's some confusion about that date. Because he has been on the board since twenty-ten and been re-upped every five years. So there's some question about why that says twenty eighteen.
So, people, remember that people can sometimes be appointed, uh, to replace someone else in the middle of their term. And it's important that these are, um, staggered, uh, so, uh, perhaps, uh, Deanna should take a peek at those. And, uh, check the staggering, uh, historically, and make sure that that's accurate. Uh, but that's very likely, it's not the date of appointment, but the term that they're filling at the time, which might be a part of a prior term, right?
That's correct.
I'm just reporting what he is.
No, no, I understand, right, right, so, but it's probably good to check it anyway.
Yeah, Chris and Jim, I think, are holdovers, I think there was, you know, we went from a seven-person board to a five-person board, and so holdover status, uh, for them. Um, so, yeah, let's find out if, uh, they both wanna continue, and then we can tackle that and get, uh, ensure that the staggering is correct. I think Hegstetter would be a twenty-four, and, uh, Carney would be a twenty-five, if I have it correctly. Um, the vacancy there on twenty twenty-five is actually a twenty twenty-three. Um, but let's wait and do those reappointments, um, at the appropriate time. And we've taken care of the chair reappointment with Kate, so we're good there. Um, we can scroll down to zoning review committee, but we haven't had any, um. Um, anything back on that, have we, Christine?
No.
Okay, so let's work on that for the, for the next time. Before we go ahead and disclose, uh, this agenda item. Um, can we have a brief, uh, conversation about training sessions, you know, something that we've talked about? Um, for quite some time now, as, uh, as we are bringing on new members to committees and more certainly. Um, I think it would be prudent of us to, um, really give some thought on, um. Arranging for training sessions to get some of those newer members up to speed and, and even you know, existing members caught up on, um, any, uh, updates and, and, uh, you know. Legal aspects of the job, also, uh, Bill Hamel, uh, spoke about ethics training and, uh, whether or not we should revise our ethics code and how we might, um, add some language so that, uh, there was some you know, requirements on the part of volunteers, so give that some thought, and maybe we can, uh, together with our attorney to the town come up with, um, some, some ideas, and, and if you would share those ideas. Uh, town board members with us, we can come up with some proposals, maybe, you know, if not, uh, at our next meeting, but certainly at the second meeting in February, does that make sense? And in particular, looking back now several years, what type of training sessions might be helpful for the Z B A, for example? And so on and so forth, so, okay. Good, what's next, what do we have left to cover? Let's go back to our. We do have a couple of reports. We have a police report, uh, Bill Hamel, do, do you wanna give the summation of the police report, this is for December twenty twenty-one?
Sure, I'll make it quick, uh, go to the last page.
Yeah.
They, uh, they reported seventy-six, um, incidents, um, one arrest, and the total number of tickets issued were thirty-five, uh, for the month, um, and I think the, um, the subcategories are fairly self-explanatory.
Okay. And for the folks at home. Not to scare you, but here are the things that they responded to. Next up, we have Building Department Report. Or, anyway, somebody had asked about, you know, what the revenue is coming in. And so, here's an example. To help offset those expenses. Who would like to give this report?
This is on the liaison, I might as well. There were eleven permits, fifty-three inspections, eight, uh, certificates of completion or occupancy, no complaints, and, uh, as you can see, seven thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars in revenue, and it's been consistently high, um, for the last number of months. And the report is many pages long, as you can scroll down and see, so they are quite busy.
Yeah. Okay, and, yeah, a little busier than they normally are during the winter, the winter was.
Yes.
And I emphasize was hospitable to doing more work. Outside, but obviously, that's changed quite a bit since this report was prepared a few weeks ago.
And if you were to drive down to Traditions, um, you'll see that they are actively busy. Um, and part of the reason that I had mentioned before, there were thirty-one homes built last year, but there are many more to build there. Um, there's a lot of construction going on, I would recommend, uh, you take a drive by some point and take a look at the, the, uh, the progress. But that's keeping the building department. Some point and take a look at the, the, uh, the progress, but that's keeping the building department very busy.
Okay. Let's see. We do have a report from. Tree Preservation Committee. Jacob, if you'd be kind enough to.
Absolutely. So, um. The committee has continued to meet remotely, communicating via email. So this year is the hundred fiftieth anniversary of Arbor Day. So they're planning for the celebration for that, which will be on April thirtieth. It's a Saturday. Um, so there'll be tree giveaway, poster contest, spring tree planting. A lot of things that have happened in the past. They're working on finalizing a list of trees for Rec Park West, for Mill School, Mill Road School and Red Hook High School. Um, so hopefully there'll be an update on that with the next report. And then, um. Hot Michael has completed the annual tree pruning on Pitcher Lane, so. Pretty brief set of bullet points there, but all good things.
Hey, Robert.
Yeah?
Uh, there was one thing I wanted to, on the water department. Uh, they did not submit a report, but there is a piece of information I'd like to share.
Sure, please do.
Good news. We, like all the municipalities in the state, were required to do quarterly testing of our wells for PFOA and PFOS. Um, and because our quarterly reportings have been clean for a certain number of quarters, the state has granted us, now we're going to yearly. Um, it's an expensive, uh, test to do, um, and complicated, and so I think that, that's good news.
Very good. Thank you very much, Bill. All right, let's see. We're almost at the end of our meeting. One of the things that we wanted to at least briefly talk about is, as we do throughout the years, grant opportunities. Two things that have come up. Back in the fall, I received a call from DHCR, the, the Department of. Uh, Housing and Community Renewal, talking about how there was gonna be a funding stream. Uh, CD BG, uh, monies coronavirus. Um, and that there was gonna be greater flexibility on, um. On these monies and municipalities and not-for-profits can participate. Um, it, it comes from the CARES Act. And they have a request for applications. And there are several eligible activities to onboard members who've had this now for some time, uh, for the folks at home. There are. Efforts in various categories that we might explore, supporting small business. Um, and I would mention that I, I see for minutes from the EDC that they are looking into the possibility of maybe recommending to us. That we apply for, um, small business, uh, support. Uh, I will say, however, that there is a separate, um, eight hundred million dollars left in COVID monies. For, uh, small business. That's different from this, this part. Improving air quality in public facilities, so we can take a look at our community and see if there's an opportunity there. Housing for safe shelter. Um, that's something that we, we definitely need. So let's, let's give some thought to that. And then, uh, D, conversion of underutilized buildings for affordable housing. So we've talked about. Affordable housing tangentially with our conversation about short-term rentals. Um, and as you all know, I'm on the task force for the county. Um, we hope to have something for you all to consume in the next month or two. I think we have our final meeting. Before draft comes out of it next month. And, uh, you know, to, to the point of how the median price of. Uh, housing has risen dramatically over the last couple of years. Let's see if there's an opportunity to, uh, take an underutilized building or buildings in our community. And maybe have some affordable or transitional housing. Uh, something that I think we desperately need here in the Northern Duchess, uh, region. Public services, um, vaccine outreach and awareness. Obviously, there's quite a bit of that going on right now. Wifi, we spoke about that as well. Mental health services. Um, we don't have a health department here locally. Um, so, you know, it would be interesting to see how we could provide support for mental health services on the very local level. Food programs, um, that's something that we'll be talking about. Again, uh, as you know, Red Hook Response has asked for us to provide some support. And the ARPA monies, which is the second topic I'd like to bring up with you. Um, would, would, uh, look to be, uh, an eligible. Use of some of those funds to help Red Hook responds with, with their efforts as well, and then special projects. And, um, the document is very long, but. I would ask you, we have time, um, on this CDBG. The application's not due until June. So we have some time to consider. You know, what types of applications, uh, we might explore. Here are the limitations, the funding limits. For towns, a minimum of three hundred thousand, so we're thinking about what type of project to do, and a maximum of two million.
Robert.
Yeah?
One thing that struck me, I, I've only skimmed this, but, uh, one thing that struck me was on the screen that you have right now. Municipalities are encouraged to consider all COVID-related needs in the community and request grants for multiple activities. Uh, I don't know how we would normally coordinate an effort like this to make sure that it's really broad, right? There could be projects in lots of different categories. And one thing that occurred to me is that Red Hook Together. Might be an interesting group to have brainstorm around, uh, some of the ideas that are out there in the community.
Happy, happy to pose the question to them. And to others, the public, to get their input on, on, uh, what is, you know, needed. And certainly what they think would be a successful application. But yes, let's, uh, let's share it with Red Hook Together. Um, and see if they have some ideas as well. All right, um, and there's a lot of requirements, uh, and they give some examples. So that people can better understand what the intent of this, uh, funding stream is. Then I don't know that I have the document up for you tonight, but, um. Just to note that I shared with you earlier that, um, Treasury came out with their final ruling. On the ARPA monies, the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds and the final ruling. And so it, it has us going back and revisiting some of the things that we were, some calculations we were doing. Um, to understand how we might look at lost revenue, for example. It was a very specific calculation we needed to do, which we did do. Um, but, um, now they've given us the flexibility that we needed in order to accurately. Report our lost revenue. It's not what the, uh. The algorithm that they gave us with the limitation, our loss was actually greater than that. So. Um, we'll be looking at ARPA money and uses for that. We have quite a bit of time for that. We need to earmark the monies. Um, by twenty twenty-four, we need to encumber them. We need to then actually complete the project and spend the money by twenty twenty-six. Um, we've mentioned a whole bunch of things that we could use the monies for. But let's look at sort of the administration as well. Um, because for each project that we would do with ARPA monies, there's gonna be some significant paperwork, something tells me. And so we want to make sure that we have the manpower, woman power, the personnel to, um, conduct. A whole wide array, array of, uh, projects. And not, uh, suffocate underneath the, the paperwork. So. Let's, uh, continue to think about those and, and we'll put together a, a long list and, uh, you know, take a look at the various funding streams. I've shared with you the Mid Hudson Economic Development Regional Council. And all of the funding opportunities that they are, um, promoting right now. So give them some thought. Review, uh, the items on their link. And, uh, let's take a look at. Applications. We're gonna be busy. Something tells me in the next, uh, spring, certainly, and some applications. Um, any, any further thoughts, folks? Anyone have anything tonight before we entertain a? A motion to, uh, close the meeting? No? Very good. Um, for the folks at home, we wish you well. Stay healthy. We'll be back here February eighth. Good night, everyone. Is there a motion to close the meeting? Make it. Thank you, Bill Hamel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine Kane. All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Julie, yeah, I can't even speak. Julia Solomon?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Good night, everyone.